Welcome to the May 19th, 2022, meeting of the South Eastern Town Zoning Border Appeals. This meeting is being held via video conferencing pursuant to part WW of Chapter 56 of the laws of 2022. Our next meeting will remain virtual, so we ask the public to continually check the town's website for updates and any new information. If you wish to view tonight's live meeting only, please do not join the Zoom meeting and instead go to the town's website. If you wish to be heard during the meeting but did not pre-register, please go to the town's meeting portal, choose the meeting group from the dropdown on the left, and you will find the information required to join the Zoom meeting. With that, I'd ask that you join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will be starting this meeting with the public hearings. We have applicants and members of the public standing by via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. Charles Certain will mute the speakers until it is their time to give testimony before the board. Please be patient. If you find that you are having difficulties accessing the hearings, please visit the town clerk's meeting portal and click on the instructions link. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, will state their address for the record, and will offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the board. We have very few items that are being adjourned tonight on the agenda, so we ask members of the public to speak to keep their comments limited to three minutes. Board members who must accuse themselves of any application will state so on the record and will be removed from the meeting until the end of the hearing. Unless otherwise stated at the end of each hearing, all of these applications will remain open for written comments for all purposes until June 3rd, 2022. Those comments can be addressed to the Board Secretary Candace and sent via email, mail, and/or drop-off at Tom Hall. And with that, I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
Second.
Mr. Kern.
Hi.
Mr. Tithel.
I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I've brought myself up to speed with the last meeting since then. Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And now on to adjournments.
Okay. We have a few adjournments this evening. I will read them when I come upon them, Adam. All right?
Sure.
So that's fine. That's three and six. And then I had a made on the agenda, which is Kim R. Lester, 17 Allenson Lane at the maze, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-323-59. I'll move to adjourn that to our June 16th meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tithel.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Item nine on the agenda is 911 Flanders Road. 911 Flanders Road in Riverside, Suffolk County Tax Maps, 900-138-231 and 32. I'll move to adjourn that to our July 21st meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tithel.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And on the decision calendar, the Colonel's Way LLC. We're going to put that decision over to our June 2nd meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Atlantic Golf Club, Inc. I'm going to move to reopen so we can extend the written submissions date to May 2nd.
May 12th.
May 12th.
All right. I'm going to get that wrong. I'm sorry.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Tithel.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, reopen.
All right. And now I'll move to close it for determination on June 16th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
All right. 153 Harris LLC. Move to reopen to accept written submissions.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Tithel.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
All right. Now we're going to close it for determination later this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay. Next is Charlton Gibson and Kia Heimark. Move to reopen to accept written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Tithel.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Now I'll move to close it for determination later this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay. Back to the beginning of the agenda. Item one on the agenda, it's a minor variance review, which is Steven Allison Bottalotta.
Keith, there were two other adjournments. Item three and item six on the agenda.
Yeah, but I said I would read them because they have to be read until we get jurisdiction.
When we get to them. Okay. No problem.
Okay.
Okay.
Item one on the agenda is Steven Allison Bottalotta, 16 Palo Alto Drive in Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-270-246. Applicant requests relief from town code 330-11, Residential District Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal front yard setback of 35.3 feet where 40 feet is required for a proposed one-story dwelling and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Okay. This is a minor, so there isn't a public hearing. And Helen, it is yours.
Okay. Since it is, there is no need for a public hearing. A decision will be rendered at the end of the hearing today.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Tithel.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay. Underneath the new applications title number two is 1737 Millstone Road. 1737 Millstone Road, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-13-1-72.2. Applicant requests relief from town code 330-11, Residential District Table of Use Regulations for a principal rear yard setback of 62 feet where 100 feet is required and nonconforming lot and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction? For Catherine?
Hi, yes. I'm Catherine.
Oh, Catherine, there might be another. There's another device. That's all I'm asking for is the feedback.
I'm not very careful.
Well, we, yeah, we know this from experience. It doesn't seem like this feedback any longer, so I just have to swear unless you're an attorney.
I am not an attorney. I am the wife of Carlos De La Torres, who couldn't be in this meeting, so I'm representing him as just a layperson.
That's fine. So I just have to swear in, so you just state your leave and address, please.
Okay. My name is Catherine Ringwood. My address is 360 East 65th Street, New York, New York, 10065.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. If you can tell us about the application.
Okay. The, I believe the setback is supposed to be 100 feet, but we are requesting 62 feet, a variance for 62 feet, because the house next door that is being built is 62 feet from the road and the house directly across the street from 1739 that were proposed, is that 17? So, I'm sorry, 1737. The house across the street from that, I don't know what the address is, but they're 62 or 65 feet. So we, just for aesthetic reasons, we think we would like to be 62 feet from the road also. And this, by the way, is not on Millstone Road. I don't know if you guys have been to this property, but it's, it's actually, I call it an auxiliary road, but I think it's called a flat lot. It's coming off, like if you turned from New York Road to make a right onto Millstone, this would be the first right. And it's a, it's a private road with a few houses on it. So most of the houses are 65 feet, 62 or 65 feet from that auxiliary road. So we'd like to get the variance for 62 feet because we just think it would look, you know, nice because most, like I said, most of the houses are 62 feet from the road.
I have a question.
Okay.
Yeah, well, actually for Katie or Candace, this is right near my parents' house.
Oh, wow.
Are my parents, my, my parents are on the other side of New York Road.
The other side.
A little further down though. No, I just want to make sure they're not adjacent across the street. I don't think they are.
No, I don't think so. This is a really small road. There's just a house on the corner there that's, like I said, 62 feet. Then there's, across the street, there's a house which is actually on Millstone. Their entrance is on Millstone.
Yeah.
And then our property is on this auxiliary road. Yeah, it's like a small road, which, you know, it's a, it's becoming a nice area because there's some nice houses there and people have been redoing their houses. So that's why we're asking for the variance for aesthetic mainly reasons.
Okay.
Catherine, it indicated that you're not allowed access to your property from New York Road. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes.
So this is technically, so this is technically the rear yard, but because it functions almost like a front yard, because it's off of the auxiliary road.
Correct. New York Road would be the back, you know, to the backyard.
Yeah, but that, but unfortunately, your rear yard is the one that, you know, fronts on to the auxiliary road.
No, no, no. That would be the front.
Okay, then, then the relief being requested is incorrect.
Oh, I have a little image here. I don't know if you guys can see it.
Can I?
Go ahead, Anthony.
You want me to share the screen?
Yeah.
First, let's look at the aerial.
Yeah.
This is the property in question. To clarify, the, the road frontage, the, the, the variance is written correctly. The road frontage, New York Road is the front yard. This is the rear yard. The rear yard is not adjacent to an auxiliary road or anything like that. It's adjacent to a flag strip, which is a common driveway. So this, this is a rear yard and not a front yard. So just.
Okay. So then I have another question, which is, the proposed tennis court appears to be in what is in the front yard?
We're not going to put a tennis court.
Well, okay, it's on, it's on the survey. The reason I mentioned that is because I believe you would need relief for the tennis court if it's in the front yard.
Yeah, I don't think, we're definitely not putting a tennis court.
Okay, then we're going to need the survey revised to remove the, the, the proposed tennis court on it.
Oh, okay. Survey revised.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And it, just so I could show the board one other thing that might help, while you look at this. Okay. This is the subdivision map that created the lot. This is the lot right here.
Yeah.
This is the corner lot there. So at the time, the subdivision was done in the 80s. You'll see they adhere to the 100-foot setback here. They're showing the building envelope. They, they, they imposed this much deeper front yard setback. They really limited the building envelope here. But to prevent the access from New York Road. So I just wanted to give the, the board, you know, a view of what was approved way back in the 80s in terms of building lots, building envelopes of these lots.
All these lots have that, that access to Millstone Route, I see.
Yep. And you could see the, the lots to the south, which don't front on New York, have much bigger building envelope, as you can see. So no surprise that these were the last two in the subdivision to come through.
Anthony, was it a condition of the subdivision that they not take access off of New York?
I'm sure. I, I can't say that for certain, Katie, but I believe my research did reveal that. But I have to confirm. All right. Well, Katie, what I can tell you is that the subdivision approval required all the lots to take access off of Millstone through the common driveway. That I can say.
Okay.
Right. And the building area being what it is, at least visually looking at it on the, on the subdivision map, I mean, I think that the house is within the building area. I'm not 100% sure where the pool is. It may be. But that's something I would suggest that you double-check.
Well, it's, it's not within the building area because the setback is proposed at 62. So.
Well, yeah, yeah. So, but I mean, well, the setbacks we proposed at 62, so basically everything's being pushed towards the, the access.
Yeah. Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, that's what we're asking for.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So we did have a comment from the building departments that I just wanted to read into the record. This is from Marjorie Riley, Building Inspector, which is survey, we may have covered this already, survey prepared by Colonial Surveyors PC dated 9/17/21. So the update is remove the word roof OH between the proposed two-story dwelling and the proposed one-story two-car garage under. In order to match the plans, show one dwelling, two stories on the east side and one story on the west side with two-car garage below. So they, they, she wants that change made to the survey as well. And again, what I mentioned about taking, taking, removing the tennis court, if you don't.
Yeah, removing the tennis court. What else do I, do we have to do?
Remove the word roof OH.
Roof.
Overhang.
Overhang.
Oh, okay.
Between the proposed two-story dwelling and the proposed one-story two-car garage under. In order to match the plans, show one dwelling, two stories on the east side and one story on the west side with two-car garage below.
Okay.
So we just need the survey and the plans to be consistent with one another.
Okay, very good. We will do that. Yes. Okay.
Okay. And Catherine, my other question for you is, have you heard from any of the neighbors?
No. We sent them all, you know, the certified letter and everything, but no. I mean, yeah, no.
Okay. Well, just a, I'd ask.
Yeah.
Maybe there's somebody here that wants to speak.
I have someone that wants to speak.
You do? Okay. All right. Katie, you have another question?
Yes. We, this, this board in 2020 did grant the, the variance to the property next door for 62 feet. And one of the, one of the reasons that they stated was, you know, due to some topography issues on that property. I mean, do you have any topography challenges on yours? Do you know?
Not as, no, it's, it's a lot flatter than that property next door that you're referring to. That has a very steep incline going, you know, towards New York Road. This property, 1737, is a little, I mean, it's hilly, but it's a little, it's not as difficult as the one next door.
Well, I mean, what, you know, one of the things that the board, you know, I mean, can you just, you need to give the board some reasons to, to explain, you know, what are the challenges of this lot, you know, why?
Right.
Why should they grant the variance, other than the, the one next door has it, which makes sense, but, you know.
Well, the one next door has it, the one across the street has it. It just, we think it makes the neighborhood look nicer and I think it's, you know, aesthetic.
Enter the neighborhood.
Pardon me?
It's within the character of the neighborhood?
Oh, that's, yes, that's a great way of putting it. I wish I thought of that. But totally, yeah, it's just, you know, I think it brings up the look of the neighborhood and.
Yeah. It's conceivably possible for you to not, to build without having this variance relief?
Would it be possible? It's possible, yeah. But, yeah, it's possible.
Does the hilliness of your property compromise your ability to build elsewhere? Does it make it easier for you to build where you're suggesting?
Um, yes, it is a flatter part of the.
Okay. Property.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's turning into a really nice neighborhood, so we want to kind of keep the aesthetic. But anyway, yeah.
I mean, I guess, I guess another way to look at it is that, you know, the, the planning board sort of set this up as being their front yard. So a front yard would have a setback, I think, of 80 feet.
Oh.
Right.
Oh, wow. That's interesting. So, okay.
I'm, I'm just, that's not what it is, but I'm saying it sort of functions, it does sort of function as your front yard.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. But, but the other reason we're asking about this, Catherine, is because to make, to say that you are requesting various relief because of aesthetics can be an issue for us because, you know, if you have a, the ability to be able to, to construct what you're looking to construct in a conforming location, aesthetics isn't necessarily an argument that's very persuasive to us. On the other hand, you know, it being hilly and there being issues with the, with this lot and it being less, you know, a easier project to construct because it's flatter towards the southern end of this lot, not the southern, northern end of this lot, you know, that, that's more persuasive to us. So that's the reason we're asking about it.
Yeah.
Essentially, it's functioning as a front yard.
It's, yeah, that's a front yard. I mean, New York, that's the backyard.
Yeah.
So it is definitely flatter, easier to build, besides just aesthetic, you know.
Okay. Any other questions, members of the board? Or Katie or Anthony or, okay. Anybody else? Okay. If not, I want to ask if there's anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with this application, which is the application of 1737 Millstone LLC for property located at 1737 Millstone Road in Sag Harbor. If you're waiting really in New York, so if you're waiting to be heard on connection with this application, please let us know by raising your hand.
I'd like to be heard.
Okay, no problem, Jill. So I just have to swear in unless you're an attorney?
I am an attorney.
You're an attorney, so I don't have to swear in. So you cannot give us your comments.
Okay. My, my comments are several-fold. I know that you have other things to do, but I want to start by saying I am the neighbor directly across the street. I never received a certified letter at all. I am friendly with the neighbors on either side of me. Neither of them received certified letters about this meeting at all.
Okay. Well, hold on a second. Hold on a second. So let's, so let's go through who got, who was, who we had certified mailing support. Katie, do you have that information?
Uh, no, Candace does, but Jill, Jill, what's your address, just so we know?
My address is 1723 Millstone Road.
What's, what is Jill's last name?
My last, my last name is Conviser. It's long. It's hyphenated. Conviser Levine, K-O-N-V-I-S-E-R hyphen Levine, L-E-V-I-N-E.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, the, the reason, I mean, I can, yeah, go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, no, I'm just, excuse me. Jill, what was your address again? You said 1727?
1723.
23. Okay, let me see what I have here.
Yeah, she's not, she's not adjacent. She's across, you know, it's mailed to adjacent property owners and it's mailed to people across the street. And you're, you're across the driveways, but those are, you know, those, the one flag lot is considered adjacent, but you're not. And that's why you didn't get mailed.
If I'm directly across the street?
Well, no, because it's not a street. There are two flag lots, you know, so we, we mailed to adjacent property owners. So that would be the flag lot behind it and people across the street, which would be across, I think, New York. So I know everybody's saying this, this flag serves as a street, but it's not a street. It's a piece of property.
Actually, that's part of the point and why this is so distressing to me and my neighbors.
Go ahead.
Because that small street that connects us is so tiny. Putting a building closer to that street would further encroach on the property. Look, if you look at the town code, obviously you can grant variances for when there's a hardship or a difficulty. There is none here. This is just about a bigger payday for the builder to have a bigger backyard or front yard, whatever you call it. At the end of the day, this road that we access and the only way for me to get to my property is so narrow that two cars can't pass. It's a very narrow area. And so for us to have a building come and approach closer to that road is something that is the opposite of aesthetically pleasing. It is not within character of the building. In addition, Ms. Ringwood also misspoke to the extent that she said the property directly across the street has a 60-foot setback. She's wrong. It doesn't. It has an 80-foot setback. It was also built in the 1980s. The building directly next to me is setback even further. She said it was the same setback. It's not. It's more than 100, it's more than 100 feet. So I happen to know that, in fact, the survey that you put up on the screen just a moment ago underscored that perfectly. This is, as I said, a narrow area. When you look at the town code, section 330, and they talk about variances, it talks about reasonable amendments and reasonable adjustments that are obvious, that you need variances in certain situations. This is not needed. It is not wanted by the community. It is simply an opportunity for the builder to get a bigger, a bigger property, a bigger build. I also was never given notice, and now I understand why, Ms. Garvin, as to when that other property was built next door. It was built by the same builder, builder. So they built the same property. They got the same setback. And the only reason articulated here tonight by Ms. Ringwood was that it was the aesthetics, which I don't think falls under any category whatsoever or in any of the case law that has come out with respect to this, that that's a reason. Although it may well be a good one, in this one, in this particular case, I disagree. I sent you a letter signed by me and my two neighbors, who are all vehemently opposed to this. The building that has been going on both at the current site and at another building, the other building built by this builder has been a complete disaster from the beginning. The street is a mess. There are nails all over. I've had seven flat tires. It's really, there was also, you can also go to Jackie Fenland, who works for the town as well, and the fights that we had with respect to all of the trees that were destroyed by the build. It costs a lot of time and a lot of energy to recreate the local, the local, what do you call it, shrubbery, whatever it is. It was really, really, there was great license taken by the builder. And I don't think they should be rewarded for, really, quite frankly, lack of candor that they've provided here today and with the way they've treated the community. To say this is, this is in character with the neighborhood is a misnomer. Come by, visit us, take a look, see how narrow that road is. See why we would be opposed to anything built, being built closer to that line. There's a reason these rules are in place. There's a reason we talk about 100-foot setback. And there's no good reason presented here to grant this variant. I am opposed to it. My neighbors, by your letter, are opposed to it. They wanted to join tonight for business reasons. They couldn't be here. They will be here for any future discussion if possible. If you have any questions of me, I'll be happy to answer anything. I want to note my complete and utter vociferous opposition to this proposal.
Any questions for Jill? Okay. If not, Jill, appreciate your comments. Want to see if there's anyone else who's waiting to be heard. Charlie, do we have anyone else whose hand is up?
I see no other hands.
No other hands. Okay. Catherine, do you want to, I want to give you an opportunity to respond?
Um, no. I mean, we'd like to have the 62-foot variance, the property across the street, which she just said was 1723. I didn't know the address. It, to me, you know, it's closer, it looked like 65 feet to me. And she's right, the one next to her is very far back. But the one that, like she said, to the left of this property is 60, 65, 62. And it would be, it would be in character with the neighborhood, contrary to her, you know, maybe you guys should come out and look at the area. And it would also be more conducive to building on that spot. That's all I really have to say. This is just a request, you know, we hope you'll honor it.
Okay. Well, I just want to also mention that Catherine and Jill, if either one of you wanted to submit anything else, the, the public hearing record will be open for written comments until, I believe, June 3rd.
Okay.
Have you received?
Thank you.
Chair Grossman?
Um, you know, I don't think I did, but, but what happens is sometimes when we get things. um, and we have the Zoom meetings, we don't always get them prior to the meeting, but appreciate the fact that you let us know about them, and, and we look at everything. So, uh, yeah, yeah, that's why, so I can't say that I haven't now, but, but I will look at it whenever.
Okay. Can I ask a question? Um, Jill, are, are you, uh, amenable to meeting with Catherine to maybe see if there can be something worked out with, with your neighbors and Catherine?
Sure.
Catherine, are you amenable?
Sure.
Well, it's always a good thing to try to see if neighbors can work out their differences.
Right. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so if you're willing to do that, I, I, I think that, that will be, uh, uh, the, the thing about this is you don't know exactly what, what we're gonna do, but if you come up with an agreement between the two of you then, um, you know, you, you, you'll know what the outcome is versus not knowing what the outcome is if, uh, as, as they stand.
Yeah, even, even if it's just increasing, you know, trying to increase that setback a little bit, you know, to, to maybe eighty. I mean, I don't, I don't know what the topography looks like, but it's something to consider.
I, I would urge any of you to come by and take a look. I think, I think you'll see, I think you'll see it my way if you do.
Is, should we leave this open, Adam, or?
Well, Catherine, if you're willing to have that conversation, um, with, with, with Jill, I have no problem with your coming back myself, but I'm just one board member, so I'm not sure where other board members stand.
Okay, I'm willing to have the conversation with her, and, um, I think it would be a good idea if you guys could come out and look at the neighborhood so you could see for yourself. But, I know, you probably don't have time for that.
No, we have time.
We have time, we'll go.
We'll come out.
Why don't we keep it open? I would like to leave this open, actually.
I agree, keep it open, and maybe the two of yous can speak and come up with some kind of a resolution.
In the meantime, we can go take a look.
Great, all right, thank you so much.
Okay, so then I just want to mention, uh, our next meeting is June second. And we do have time on the, uh, on our, our agenda. Is that enough time, or do you want the, the second meeting in June?
Um, I, I'd like a little more time, actually.
Okay, June sixteenth is our next meeting?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, Jill, does that work for you, June sixteen?
Virtual, a, a virtual meeting?
I, yeah.
No, June, June, let me see, June sixteenth, the town, the town board is considering legislation that would allow these meetings to be hybrid, so assuming that passes, um, it will be, it will be live for the board and the public will have an opportunity to either Zoom or to be in person.
I stand corrected.
That hasn't, yeah, that hasn't, that hasn't passed yet, so our next meeting, June, um, second is definitely video conference, and the next meeting after that, which is June sixteenth, possibly will be hybrid.
Well, then I would ask that this be on June second for that purpose.
Okay.
Well, either way, you could appear virtually on the sixteenth.
You can appear, you can appear remotely.
We don't, we don't, yeah, we don't, we don't know.
That's not what I'm hearing from Ms. Garvin.
Correct, correct. I think it, it, it is not definite that, that it's going to be hybrid yet, so, you know, po- you know, possibly what we could do is put, you know, put it on for, put it down for June second, and next week, I believe, the hearing is before the town board, and if we find out that it's going to be hybrid, then maybe you both could send a letter and ask that it be adjourned until June sixteenth.
Okay, that sounds good.
By, otherwise it's on June second.
Correct, we're gonna do it, we're gonna put it off at June second now, and then depending on what happens, we'll adjourn to the sixteenth.
Okay, let me just make one point. I won't be able to speak to her before June second, so I'll just write in my letter and everything, and then come to the meeting on June second.
Okay, well, and, and touch base with, touch base with, you know, with the board, touch base with me next week.
Okay, what is her name again, I'm sorry?
It's Katie Garvin, in the town attorney's office.
Katie Garvin.
And that way, you know, on the twenty-fourth, if we find out it's going to be hybrid, then, then you, that will give you guys more time to speak.
Uh, June sixteenth.
Correct, but, yes.
Yeah, the possible hybrid is June sixteenth. Okay, we're gonna put it over for now until June second.
Alrighty.
Okay.
Is that a motion, Mr. Mister Grossman?
That, that is a motion to keep the public hearing open till the second.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Do we, do we have a second?
Keith seconded.
Okay, Mr. Tudhill?
Hi.
Ms. Kern?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
I just came on, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain from that.
Okay, no problem, Mr. Macedonia?
Hi.
Um, Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Chair Bo-Tai?
Okay, item three on the agenda is Dymax Realty LP, sixty-three Newtown Road in Hampton Mays. Applicant request relief from town code three thirty dash one sixteen, extension as it relates to town code three thirty dash one sixty-seven B one A. Specific types of variances to allow an expansion of a non-conforming use as follows, one, to permit the relocation of an existing barn and to allow the conversion of sted barn into a cottage without cooking facilities, and two, to permit a proposed two thousand nine hundred and forty-three square foot second story addition to an existing one-story frame residence and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
I'll move that, uh, we adjourn this application to our June sixteenth meeting. Second?
Mr. Tudhill?
Hi.
Mr. Macedonia?
Hi.
Ms. Kern?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Mr. Daly? Chair Bo-Tai?
Item four on the agenda is Janet Zimmerman, forty-four Mill Road in Remsenberg Splash. Spiong, self-keeping tax map, nine hundred dash three sixty-nine dash one dash twenty-one. Applicant request relief from the following provisions of the town code. Three thirty dash eighty-four D pyramidite for a total pyramid encroachment of a hundred and twenty-three feet, cubic feet. To legal, to legalize a second story addition to an existing dwelling without the benefit of a building permit, and two, three thirty dash eleven residential table of dimension regulations for a principal rear yard setback of fifty point three feet, where sixty feet is required to legalize a second story deck addition to an existing dwelling. I guess it appears to be built without the benefit of a building permit and a non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Evening, Daphne, just have to swear you in. You state your name and address.
Daphne Vaughn, Surfside Environmental Planning, uh, two twenty-five Montauk Highway, Mariches, New York. I'm also here with Janet Zimmerman, she's probably going to speak.
Okay, and Janet, if you could just also state your name and address for record, please.
For my address, um, do I, the, the Remsenberg house, or?
Whatever address you wanna, wanna give us.
Uh, yeah, my name is Janet Zimmerman. I live at four oh four Second Street in Brooklyn, New York.
Okay.
And also at forty-four Miller Road in Remsenberg.
Okay, and do you both swear to tell the truth of all truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. You can tell us about the application, then.
Okay, so, um, so the subject property is currently developed with a one and a half story residence, uh, with an attached second floor deck, a lower at-grade deck, uh, surrounding an existing in-ground swimming pool and a gravel driveway. It has a certificate of occupancy from nineteen sixty-five for the dwelling, as well as certificates of compliance from nineteen eighty-four for the swimming pool, uh, nineteen ninety-three for the lower deck, and another one from nineteen ninety-three for a fireplace and a change of two windows. The property is zoned R one, R twenty, and it's non-conforming because it's only nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet. Uh, this board, back in nineteen sixty-five, granted a zoning variance for the original development of the property for a rear yard principal setback of fifty-one feet. Uh, that was in decision one five zero six, granted April fifteenth in nineteen sixty-five. So, uh, as stated, we're here to legalize extension of, uh, rear second-story dormers. I'm going to share my screen if that's okay. Um.
Sure.
Let's see, I got too many things. So this is the, this is the survey. Um, so there's a, a full dormer on the back of the house now. It was originally just a partial dormer. Uh, this is a cape, cape-style house. And this is the second story deck that was constructed without permits, so I can show you some of those other things. I do have copies of the, this is the original, uh, building plan. These are dated May of nineteen fifty-eight. Uh, and it does show the house as a cape. I know that Marjorie, in her comments, says that the house was only one story. I'm not really sure where she got that information, but these are the original building permit plans that were with the, uh, with everything. This is the original house, um, with the partial, um, dormer that was extended. So the plans that we have here show the, this is the deck, and then this is the existing, um, original dormer. And this is an original, uh, encroachment that was discovered in doing these plans of seventy-one cubic feet that, uh, we're seeking to legalize as part of this variant. And then, uh, what was done without permits was extension of that dormer across the entire, uh, upstairs of the house, which, uh, is this additional area that is a hundred and twenty-three cubic feet. Uh, I did meet with Marge at the counter earlier this week, and I know she has comments in her letter asking for changes to the plans. She did tell me that a letter would suffice, uh, from the architect, um, basically stating, and I will show you, a correction to those plans. Paul Clinton is our architect. So she asked us to have a letter to clarify. Uh, we have on the plans that it's a pre-existing encroachment. It's not pre-existing per se because this is, this house was constructed in nineteen sixty-five. Um, so it's an existing encroachment, not a pre-zoning encroachment of seventy-one cubic feet, and then the current additional encroachment of a hundred and twenty-three cubic feet on the northern elevation. So combined is a total of a hundred and ninety-four cubic feet of requested pyramid building. And, uh, copies of this were submitted to Candace earlier today. Uh, one last thing that I should share. Um, hmm. If I can find it in my stuff. Um, I don't think I have it.
Okay, so maybe we can talk a little bit about these aspots and how they, how they were constructed without permits.
Yeah, so, uh, oh, I will say that the, uh, dormers were constructed in two thousand and twelve. Uh, the deck was constructed in two thousand fourteen. These things were applied for with the building department in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, and there was a notice of incomplete issued by Dennis O'Rourke.
It's on the file, yes, it's on the file, but they were built without permits, and then subsequently in two thousand and fifteen, the, the applicant made app, made an application to the, uh, building department to legalize, and I believe got a response saying you need various relief, and that happened in two thousand and fifteen, and now we're seven years later. And now, seven years later, we're following through on that process. Who built these structures? Who, who was the contractor?
His name was Brian Dunn. I had hired him to, uh, fix up a, a bathroom for me, put in some new tiles, a new vanity, and, you know. Um, and, uh, I don't know, I was talking with him and complaining because my, my husband would get out of bed and he was always banging his head. He's, we're, we're kind of Mutton Jeff, I'm four eleven and he's six foot three. Um, and so, uh, uh, he said, well, I can do something about that, and I said, great, that's wonderful, and he gave me a price and sounded reasonable, and it never occurred to me that I should have applied for anything. Um, I thought he should have told me, but he didn't.
Was he, is he, was he, or is he a licensed contractor in the town of Southampton?
You know, I, I don't really know. He was recommended to me by, uh, uh, the broker who, uh, who sold the house to me when I bought it in two thousand and three.
Yeah, kind of surprising to me that you say that you don't think you need a building permit. Wouldn't it need a building permit? I can understand that for like a shed, or maybe, maybe another accessory structure, but to actually do work on a house without a building permit, that's kind of surprising to me that, that, um, now that you or the contractor realizes, realized that you need approvals. And this isn't, this didn't happen in nineteen sixty.
No.
Yeah. Okay.
Two thousand, just before standing.
Took place between you and the contractor of any kind about getting permits?
Uh, he never said anything about it, and I.
Did you contact anyone?
Didn't return to me.
Did you contact anyone in the town of Southampton, just the building apartments at the time?
Yeah, no, I didn't.
And then what happened in two thousand and fifteen? Uh, how did you discover that you needed permits for the aspote structures?
Well, I was thinking about, uh, enlarging the front dormer so I could get more light on that side of the, the building. Um, and, um, enlarging kind of the entryway, because every time I walked in with groceries, I, I would hit the steps and I had trouble getting around the door. Um, uh, and I, I said something to, uh, the pool guy, um, I, I used White Rapids, and he recommended a contractor named Martin, I don't remember his last name. Um, and Martin came and looked and he said, hey, you didn't do this, you should have done this, and I said, oh, okay, um, do you know anybody who could handle this for me? And he recommended, uh, this guy named Mark Nadoff, who I hired and paid, and he filed stuff with, with you guys. Um, and then kind of disappeared on me. Uh, I kept trying to find him, and he became unfindable. I don't really know what happened to him. I've heard rumors, but, you know, I just don't have a clue what happened to him.
Missing and the person who has the expediter.
Not the contractor, he's the, this is the architect.
That's the second person. The first person was the contractor. You said that, you, you referred, said that was, I don't know if something happened to the, the contractor. Is he still around?
Um, he stopped returning phone calls.
Okay, and the expediter wouldn't, wasn't responsive after a certain point, uh, uh, after the, the paperwork was submitted?
Right.
Okay, did it occur to you to hire someone else to finish the job?
I actually, I, I, uh, I went online, I found somebody about a year or two later. Um, um, Bennett, I think was his name, uh, in Southampton. And, and he referred me to another architect, um, whose name was Laffey. Uh, and he gave me a price for him, just for the architect part of it, of over thirty thousand dollars, and I just about fell off my chair. Uh, because that was kind of my budget to do the whole thing. Um, um, and, uh, and now I got, got scared off by that and put it off, and then family stuff happened, and, um, but, uh, you know, I knew all along that I needed to deal with this, and getting older, and I don't want to leave the house to my kids without this being dealt with.
Okay, well, I appreciate your, you, you know, the information you provided. Um, when people build houses, uh, uh, structures without approvals, it's a really big problem. It depends on what's built. Sometimes it can be built and it won't have that much of an impact on the neighbors. Other times, something can be built and it has a major impact on the neighbors. So, when these, when these things happen, when structures go out without approvals, we need to know how it, how it all occurred. Um, and then we have to evaluate it, because the fact that it's an aspote structure means that it's what's called a self-created hardship. Okay, so, and that's a part of our area variance standard. So this is a self-created hardship, um, in terms of what, what transpired, um, but even if it's a self-created hardship, that does not require that we deny the variance. We have to, application, we have to consider the rest of the, of the area variance standards. Um, that having been said, um, That having been said, the amount of relief that's being requested here is minimal pyramid relief. And the setback relief, we'll see if there are any of the neighbors that have any concerns. But the relief is not that significant. But I just want to emphasize to you, Janet, if you have any doubt ever in the future about whether you need permits, contact the building department. And also, when you drive around town and you see properties that are being worked on, you normally see a notice, an actual permit posted. People do that because that's part of the requirement. So it just is, you know, I just encourage you and anyone who's wants to, you know, is concerned about these things to always make sure you get permits when you need to. And if you have a question as to whether you need one, to contact the building department and find out with you.
You're 100% right. I was really stupid. You know, I had this contractor. He was solving my problem. I thought it was wonderful. And I should have been smarter. I apologize.
Well, I appreciate your candor and all this. And I understand you're trying to, you know, rectify the situation. And I do appreciate that. Daphne, you had a...
I do want to say that the setback for the deck is incorrect. The 50.3 that is referenced is a setback for the house, actually.
Okay.
Should actually be 40.3 feet because the deck is 10 feet wide.
Is that measurement on the survey, the 40.3?
It's not, but the 50.3 is...
It is, it is. So the survey needs to be revised to reflect... If the number's 40.3, we need the survey amended to have that measurement on there.
Okay.
Okay. Also, we did have comments from the building department. So let me just...
Susan, you're muted. Susan.
Adam, before you get to that, can I just get clarification of what exactly are we asking for in terms of pyramid relief? Because if 71 cubic feet was the existing pyramid encroachment from 1965, are you asking for pyramid relief for that?
Correct, yeah. So that's what I went over with that letter.
Okay, so you're asking for that? Okay. And the 123? Okay, so it's 194?
Yes, correct.
Was it required in 1965?
I don't know that it was. I don't... Nobody must have looked at it at that time.
I don't think it was.
But is the rule generally, Adam, that when we do these that we correct and we correct everything, even if it was?
We do, absolutely.
Even if it wasn't a problem in 1965, we do correct it now so that...
Is that correct, Katie?
Okay, okay.
We just give them 194 cubic feet. Let's move on.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I just can't get my hands on the building department work sheet. Does somebody have that? Because I want to make sure... Or Daphne, have you already seen it? Oh, here it is.
I have it.
Okay, I found it. Okay. Okay. So this is what we got from Marjorie Riley. "The lounge area located on the second story shall not be utilized as secondary kitchen. Surveyors shall include the second story deck as part of the total lot coverage." And I know that we got permission on some of this. "After reviewing town records, CO number 3802 dated June 8, 1965, was issued for a one-story dwelling. Such elevations showing existing pyramid encroachment or the one-story dwelling without the second story addition shall be submitted to confirm the pyramid encroachment prior to the second story addition. For architects shall remove the word 'pre-existing' when referencing any pyramid encroachment original to the construction of the dwelling." So I know you addressed some of that already, Daphne.
Yeah, so the letter references basically three and four. And two, we are working on the revisions to the survey. We'll also add that setback to the deck, that 40.3, in addition to that lot coverage change. And I believe that should cover everything.
Okay. Lastly, have you heard from any of the neighbors?
No, actually, I just heard from one neighbor that they were incorrectly portrayed on the survey. So we're fixing that as well. And that's really all.
Any other questions, members of the board? Katie, Anthony? Is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard on soon this evening to answer the application of Zimmerman? This is your property located at 44 Mill Road in Rensenberg. If you're waiting to be heard on Zoom, this will be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
I see no hands.
Okay, if not, Bob, it's yours.
Okay, I move to close the meeting and hold open for submissions until June 3 with a decision on theme. Second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Macedonia?
Hi.
Mr. Tithel?
Hi.
Ms. Burdis?
Hi.
Ms. Kern?
Hi.
Ms. Daly? Hi. Jericho Ty, thank you both for your testimony this evening. Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Item five on the agenda is Donald Bouchard, Deborah Bouchard, 14 Jackson Avenue in East Quag. Applicant request for relief from town code 330-77D, placement of accessory building structure and uses in residence districts where rear yard coverage of 29.2%, where a maximum of 20% is permitted for a proposed swimming pool, a non-conforming lot, and any other relief necessary.
Court has jurisdiction.
Good evening, Lori.
Hi there.
How are you?
I'm good. How you doing?
I'm doing okay.
Good.
All right, just have to swear you in. State your name and address for the record, please.
Lori Wiltshire, 231 Pantico Road, East Hampton, New York, 11937.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. If you can tell us about the application.
Sure. It's pretty straightforward. The application is for a swimming pool on a subject property that is undersized at 15,000 square feet in an R20 zone and is a corner lot with two front yards. The existing structures have been in place since 1961, leaving only one location for the proposed pool in the rear yard. However, because this is a corner lot and the house takes up most of the center of the property, the small 12-foot by 30-foot proposed pool will cause the rear yard lot coverage to increase by 2.4%. It should be noted that the pre-existing improvements already exceed the 20% permitted rear lot coverage by 6.8%. And that 322 square feet, a breezeway of 322 square feet in the rear is slated to be demolished, as well as a small shed. Then 398 square feet will be added, resulting in the 295 square foot variance request. In the end, the rear lot coverage will be 9.2% over what is permitted. It should also be noted that the immediate neighbor to the east at 16 Jackson on an almost identically sized lot was granted relief to allow a swimming pool within the minimum and total side yard of the principal dwelling. So in conclusion, the granting of this small variance will not be precedent-setting for this neighborhood.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we have a couple of things going on with this application in terms of the limitations. One is two front yards. And the other is two dwellings on a single lot. So that, between those two things, I think...
No, that two-dwelling thing is incorrect. I actually corrected that.
There's a most third frame building that's not dwelling?
No. I'm a great assessor this week. It actually has been totally gutted. It's a garage that's having a small addition added to it.
Okay, okay. All right, well, I'm glad you clarified that because I thought I saw on the application about two dwellings.
No, Marjorie pointed that out. It was in the assessor's records, but nobody knows why. So I went up and showed them the gutted building and they fixed it. And they're going to save $96 a year in taxes because of it.
Okay. But the garage is, you know, not... It's a decent size. And I'm trying to see what else is, you know, kind of causing the rear yard lot coverage to be at where it's going to be. I would say it's probably the garage and what's being proposed. And I know you mentioned a couple of things that are going to be removed.
Yes. The breezeway that connects the garage to the house and a small shed that were both in the rear yard.
Okay. Okay. Well, as you know, we grant relief for rear yard lot coverage from time to time. And you know, we often see it in the range up to when it's around between 20 and 25%. It's typically granted. When it's over 25, and particularly when it's over 30, it becomes more of an issue. Here, what you're saying is some of it is pre-exist, that it already had pre-existing rear yard block coverage over 20%.
Yes, we were 6%, 6.7%. And then these structures are removed. And then we add the pool. And that puts us at 9.2%.
Right.
It's a small pool, too.
It is a small pool, 12 by 30.
Yeah, okay.
The good splash pool for the kids. It's not a good lap pool for my clients.
Okay. We have building department comments again. So Lori, maybe you've seen them already, but I just want to read them as the record.
I did.
Okay. All right. So this is from Marjorie Riley, building inspector. And this is what we have. "The survey shall be revised to show the EX 54.2 as a rear yard setback instead of side yard setback. And the EXPRY, principal, see their principal rear yard setback of 31.3 feet as a side yard setback instead of rear yard setback. Two, the asphalt driveway shall be reconfigured to comply with the number of required off-street parking spaces pursuant to town code 33094. These parking spaces are permitted to be located within the required front yard. Any number of spaces in excess of what is allowed will require a variance. And three, although not part of this application, it shall be noted that this property is assessed as having two dwellings by the town assessor's office." So that's why I was asking about two dwellings.
Yes.
Okay.
That was news to my client, actually.
Wow, wow, okay. Do you think the applicant's okay with what's permitted in terms of off-street parking?
Yeah, I think we're fine.
Okay.
They're changing the driveway and there will only be two parking spaces.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments, members of the board?
Adam, I had a question on Marjorie's comments. The 52-point, I'm sorry, the 54.2 and the 31.3 seem to be measured from the same line, one of which she says is a rear yard setback. And the other one, she says, should be a side yard setback. I'm confused.
So what happens is when you have two front yards, there's a determination made as to which is your rear yard and the other one is your side yard. And she says the surveyor hasn't labeled incorrectly.
But they're both, but they're both going to the same line.
Oh, I wasn't reading that.
Yeah, well, that's what I was... Katie, do you see what I'm talking about?
No, I don't. But I'm, you know, Lori's got to clarify it with Marjorie.
Yeah, and the survey.
I was just confused because it seems to be measured from the same line, one of which they're calling a rear and one of which they're calling a side yard. So I don't know. It's the same line.
I don't think it has much impact on this application. I think it just has to do with the building department. And because we're not asking for setback relief.
I understand. I was just asking for my clarification.
I understand. I wasn't reading it as from the same line, but I'll check with her.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure either. Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, public. There's a runner from the public who is waiting to be heard on Zoom this evening to answer the application of Bouchard. This is your property located at 14 Jackson Avenue in East Quag. If you're waiting to be heard on Zoom, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
Charlie? There's no hands.
No hands, okay. Now, Susan, it's yours.
Okay, I'm going to move to close the public hearing. Leave it open for written submissions till June 3 with a decision on June 16.
Second. Ms. Kern?
Hi.
Ms. Daly?
Hi.
Mr. Tithel?
Hi.
Ms. Burdis? Mr. Macedonia?
Hi.
Jericho Ty, thank you for your comments this evening, Lori. Have a good rest of your night.
Okay, under re-advertised applications, item six, we have 110 Gaia LLC, 110 Gaia Road in Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-49-1-3.3. Applicant request for relief from the following provisions of the town code for a proposed 55 by 114 tennis court. 330-11 residential district stable dimension regulations, an accessory distance from street, front yard setback of 45 feet where 90 feet is required, and an accessory side yard setback of 22.5 feet where 30 feet is required. And 330-76D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts. And 330-83C yards to allow the proposed tennis court to be located within the required front yard and the required minimum side yard for the principal dwelling and any other relief necessary.
Court has jurisdiction.
I'll move to return this application to our June 16 meeting.
Second.
Tithel?
Hi.
Ms. Kern?
Hi.
Ms. Daly?
Hi.
Mr. Macedonia?
Hi.
Ms. Burdis?
Hi.
Jericho Ty?
Okay, item seven on the agenda is 40 Ocean View Drive LLC, 40 Ocean View Drive in Shinnecott Hills, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-271-1-44. Applicant request for relief?
A holdover.
A holdover, sorry.
Go ahead. Bruce?
Yes.
How are you?
I am well, and yourself?
Doing okay. Swear you in last time, so I don't have to swear. I don't have to swear you in again. Or you can give us, you can give us an update.
Okay, so you will recall, we were here in February. And what we were requesting was pyramid relief in the amount of 8,788 cubic feet. Our essential hardship here is that this is a lot in an R15 zone that is undersized. And but most critically, it is a lot that's only 40 feet wide. And as you know, in an R15 zone, the minimum lot would be 100 feet. So this creates a real hardship in terms of building any kind of reasonably sized house, particularly anything having two stories with respect to the pyramid law. I mentioned during the public hearing in February that we would be demolishing the house. And the house that we're actually building as to footprint is smaller than the house that we are demolishing. And we brought total coverage down to 20% of that. I also mentioned to you during the hearing that we had increased our side yard setbacks. And what we're left with is a house that's 80 feet long and 25 feet wide. So the objection there that we heard was that the board felt that the pyramid relief was excessive. So we actually hired a different surveyor, a different architect, B&amp;M Architecture, and provided this board with revised plans. If you can go to the screen, I can walk you through the plan and some of the other exhibits we've developed. And I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. So there's the survey. That really hasn't changed. But you'll see, and if you blow it up, you'll see with the side yard setbacks. And it contains the coverage information on the upper left-hand side. And you'll see that we've brought that into compliance with respect to coverage. So the total existing house was 2038, this is 2000. So we've just made it comply. We've also, on the next exhibit, provided you with the plans. Hang on. And we get to the next one. So, okay. And there are the revised plans. The upper right-hand side is the portion of the house that faces the road. To the left of that is the left side or the eastern elevation. The lower left-hand side... The lower left-hand side is the rear elevation, which is the elevation facing south. And you'll see that has the walk-in basement, so this is a two-story house. And then finally, the right side is the western elevation. The pyramid calculations then follow, and as I mentioned before, we were asking for 8,788 cubic feet, which has now been reduced to 6,688 cubic feet. So in essence, we've reduced that by 2,100 cubic feet. This is a house that is just under 21 feet in an overall height, 32 feet is permitted in the town of Southampton. The next plan is the first floor and second floor plan. The board should take note that we eliminated one of the bedrooms of the prior plans. We have only one bedroom upstairs. Now, if we can go to the next one, the what interests me about the neighborhood is that there are four lots that are each all 44 square feet. Each of these lots have been developed in variance with the current code, whether that be pyramid relief, whether it be side yard setbacks, et cetera. As I've said here, we've actually increased our side yard setbacks. We do have a partial second floor addition that causes the majority of our issues with pyramid. So the next one. The aerial photograph was previously put in. I think the important takeaway, this shows the existing condition. And you should notice that we had an objection to, from the neighbor to the west, which is Seaburnich, but I want the board to take note that our house is substantially behind their house and not adjacent to that house. We go to the next one, shows the proposed condition, which is essentially, we're essentially using the same footprint, although we're building a narrower house. The next one, please. The two properties are bordered by dense vegetation and a six-foot fence. And then finally, the next one is, I've taken our survey and and reduced it and attached to the property to the south to show you how that second story relates to the first, to the house to the west. And what you can see that is in green is the second story portion of this house that causes the pyramid that was depicted earlier on. And then as we go to the other properties, we have 14 Ocean View Drive. That is an obvious pyramid non-conformity. It's followed by the board's grant of pyramid relief, which doesn't state what it is, but it would have to be enormous, given the survey that I attach. And the reason why I do this is the board makes a number of findings, and the that the property was pre-existing non-conforming, as is ours, that the that the parcel is very narrow at 43.84, just as ours is, and that it violates the total side yards, and that there's no further encroachment into a side yard, which is consistent with ours, and that essentially that the variance would not affect the character of the neighborhood. I then go and show you what that survey looks like, which is in front of you. And then you go directly next door, and that's 12 Ocean View Drive, which also benefited from a variance, but it was it's redeveloped and occurred prior to the adoption of the pyramid law. And you can see, though, again, the pyramid relief would have been enormous given the proximity of the house relative to side yards at 3.2 feet and 6.6 feet. And we actually were able to get a copy of the, if you go to the next one, of the building plans from the town's annex in Hampton Bay. And we tried to make our own pyramid diagram to give the board a sense of how this relates to what we're posing here, because, again, you're dealing with two lots that essentially have the same hardship, and that is that limited 44-foot lot width in this R15 zone, which otherwise would have required 100 feet in lot width. And we estimate that a house to be approaching the pyramid by approximately 15,000 cubic feet. And to the right of that, you'll see is the south elevation. That is the portion of the property that is one story, because the second story, as I showed you before, is backed away towards the street. So the portion of the house where the pyramid is quite limited is actually that portion adjacent to the neighbors. And it's, if you look carefully at that plan, it's it's just the very corners of that portion of the one-story portion of the house. And then, of course, below it is the portion that faces the street. So on the left side, you'll see the garage entrance. You see the pyramid lines drawn, and you see ours. So those are essentially what we've looked at. So we've tried to reduce the pyramid. We've gone to a redesign. We hope that we've addressed your comments. We also, in attendance today, is our architect, who can, Mayron Talal, who can answer any design-related questions you may have.
Okay, well, thank you for the presentation, Bruce. So I appreciate that all the effort that's gone into this. It is a reduction of the amount of pyramid relief that's being requested from 8788 to 6688, which is, you know, probably about, I would imagine, about 25% reduction pyramid. Don't know whether that is enough of a reduction to satisfy members of the board, but we will find out. In the meantime, I know you have the gentleman who's the architect waiting to speak, so he can add a few words.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, just have to swear you in unless you have a turn. You can state your name and address, please.
Mayron Talal, 801 Motor Parkway, Hoppock, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Adam, just have Mayron spell his last name.
T A L A I E.
A I E?
Yes, you should know that by now.
Your email just says Mayron, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. And I just wanted to add a few things in addition to what Bruce said. As you mentioned, the cubic volume went from 8788 cubic feet to 6688, exact reduction of 24%. We also, first of all, I was commissioned to redesign the building, and that's where I come in. We also reduced the ceiling heights, both on first and second floor, from 10 feet each to nine feet each. So the building. I'm sorry?
Make them eight foot.
Yeah. So the building shrunk, the height shrunk by approximately two feet. And as Bruce mentioned, we completely eliminated one bedroom, so to get, to reduce the volume on the second floor. I think at 6688 and 24% reduction, I think, in my opinion, 24% is a substantial reduction. But I leave that decision up to you and the board members.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Keith, you want to tell us something?
No, no, just, I don't think the, what's it, 6688 or 6788? I don't think that's acceptable, I got to be honest with you.
Yeah, I think it's excessive as well. You know, it's a flat roof, square, there's no gable in the roof. I agree with Keith, I think it's excessive for that area, you know. Some lots are not meant to have two-story houses on them, you know. We just have to sometimes accept that fact.
Bruce, can I ask you something? Did you say on the second floor, there's only one bedroom?
Yes, that is correct.
Can they do without that one bedroom?
I'm sorry, you're asking me or Bruce?
Bruce.
I would, one proposed bedroom on the second floor.
Bruce, I can't hear your answer, Bruce.
No, we have one bedroom on the second floor.
I said, could they do without that bedroom? And then we wouldn't need a second.
So basically, you're asking to do a one-story house?
Yes.
Would the neighbors encourage a one-story type of house?
We're saying to you that we think that 6688 is still excessive.
I understand.
So that's why I agree with Michael. Says, well, maybe you need to do a one-story house.
That would be out of character in this neighborhood. The neighborhood is almost entirely consists of two-story houses. Whether the lot be 40 feet, 44 feet wide, or whether it be 144 feet wide.
Well, we're only dealing with your house right now.
No, but we're dealing with the character of the neighborhood. That's why I'm trying to walk you through these other houses and other variances that were granted in the area.
Yeah, well.
Is the total pyramid, is the total pyramid encroachment all from the second floor?
Most of it is from the second floor, but can I add something? I'm sorry to interrupt everyone. If we were to do a one-story house with a gable roof on it, we would still be very close to the cubic volume that we're asking. If you look at my schematics, maybe not 6,000 cubic feet, but we would still be very close.
Could you, 5,000 feet?
Maybe 5,000 feet, but another thing I want to bring up to the board members, as our new design, which I've been responsible for, as it's before you, the square foot of this house is 2,500 square feet. So the house itself is very small in relation to that cubic volume that we're asking for. 2,500 square foot house, today's trend is not a huge house, it's not a large house.
That's the footprint, or that's first and second floor?
That's first and second floor living space is exactly 2,571. And we will put these numbers, document them on the drawings.
Well, it's a small lot, so small lots can't sometimes fit, you know, bigger houses.
Ten pounds, five pounds.
I'm not swayed, I'm not swayed by that rationale. It's excessive, I'm not in favor of it. That's kind of where my thinking goes, so.
So this happened, so the pyramid release has got to be reduced, and there aren't four votes in favor of the current revised plan, 6688. So I would suggest that we put this over and see how much it can further be reduced, whether by making it a one-story or reducing the ceiling heights, which Keith mentioned, or a combination. Actually, maybe a combination.
Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. Go to a one-story house, we're essentially talking about a one-bedroom house, and maybe we'll have a one-bedroom in the basement, so we're talking about a one-bedroom house. If we do go to a one-story building, unless, you know, currently on my plans, we only have one bedroom on the first floor, one bedroom on the second floor.
You're going to have to alter your plans, figure it out, that's your job, that's what they pay you for. You guys just want what you want, when you want it, when you want it.
For 2,500 square feet, I somehow think you could find another bedroom or two on the first floor, so. I don't know, but that's your job as the architect.
Okay. But if we were to reduce the volume, I just heard, either was Mr. Chairman or another board member, that something about 5,000 cubic feet, would that be acceptable? I'm not saying that is the number, I'm not suggesting that. But would that be something that the board would encourage?
Not necessarily, not necessarily, no. Not for my vote, I think it's too big, it's a small lot, it has, it's restricted.
Okay.
How large, how large is the lot?
11,000 square feet in an R15, but it is also the narrowest house in the neighborhood.
Narrowest lot in the neighborhood.
And the narrowest house. It's got the largest side yard. I just walked you through the other properties, including the property next door, and it has the largest side yards in the neighborhood, among these strained 40-foot lots. And it has, and compared to the other two two-story houses on these narrow lots, it is approximately half the pyramid encroachment that exists today. That is why I felt we could satisfy the argument on practical hardship and also character of the neighborhood.
Can I, the architect?
You thought wrong.
Can I, Architect, Mayron, how many square feet is the first floor?
First floor is 1,537, and second floor is.
In the 1,537 square feet, you are.
1,537, and second floor is 1,537.
About the second floor. In that 1,537 square feet, you are only a one-bedroom?
That is correct.
Yeah, the previous, the previous plans had a junior master and another bedroom on the first floor, and a gym. So what is on that first floor now?
I believe, Ms., I believe the previous plans were not, were much larger than this in terms of the footprint. I could be wrong. But I don't know if you have a copy of the floor plans.
We do, we did get the plans.
Yep, let's bring them back up.
Oh, but actually, is the garage still on the first floor now, too?
That is correct, one car garage.
Okay, because that could be taking up the space.
That could be taken out if it, worst scenario, yes. Bruce, can you?
Hold on.
Page 101, please.
The one up next.
Yeah.
Hold on.
One more.
Give me a second.
One more, oh, oh, yeah.
Hold on, there you go.
Okay, can you zoom in on the first floor, please?
First floor is the one.
All right, so that's, that is your first floor. The garage could be taken out, and, but it's not going to give us much of a reduction in the volume.
Yeah, I mean, look, the house is too big for the lot. It's excessive, as far as several of us are concerned. I understand the owner wants what they want, but I think you need to, we're not going to tell you what the answer is. You know, you come in at 4525, and we'll prove it. I mean, that's not our job, it's just too big. I think you need to reevaluate the plan.
We will do, absolutely, but I don't, I don't think, you use the word excessive. The house is 25 feet wide, that's not excessive in any, in, in.
Any way. But for that lot, it is. Obviously, because you're asking for an excessive amount of pyramid relief, and in my opinion, at least, and it seems a couple of the colleagues feel that way, too, so. You can't always just have what you want, you know.
Can I ask a question? Is there a way to, with all the setbacks and everything else, to expand the first floor, just on one level? Can you expand it, or are you already up against setback issues?
We could expand that, but then it would be before you for a side yard variance or front yard.
Okay, I just want to, so in terms of length? You can't expand it in length, I don't know, I was just asking.
I'm not 100% certain about the rear yard, Bruce can probably answer that better. But maybe, I don't have a copy of the survey with me, the latest survey.
Hang on one second. Well, I would just, again, to reiterate, among these 40-foot lots, it has the largest side yard, and it is the narrowest house in the neighborhood.
No, there's the survey.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
Can we see if there's anybody from the public here who'd like to offer something here? And obviously, Mr. Anderson and his architect need to go back to work.
Okay, absolutely do that. Is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with the application of? in connection with the application of Forty Ocean View Drive LLC? This is for property located at Forty Ocean View Drive in Schenochak Hills. If you are waiting to be heard on Zoom, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
I have a few people.
No hands.
I have a few people.
You do, okay.
There's a few, yeah.
Okay.
Lillian? I gotta put your video on.
Okay, you guys are muted. We can't hear you.
Okay, here you go.
There may be another device.
Yeah, one computer at a time.
Okay, all right. Did you previously give testimony on this application?
Okay, can you hear us now?
I can hear you now. Did you previously testify?
Yes, we did.
You did, okay. So you're going to state your names again.
My name is Celia Gilvery, an attorney at law.
Yep, okay.
I think they have to be sworn in.
Yes, if you haven't been, if you were previously sworn in, and I don't swear you in again.
Okay, I have been sworn in.
Okay, very good. Okay, so you're going to state your name again.
My name is Chris Severnick.
Okay, very good. Okay, and you can now both give us your comments.
May I make a statement to the board, first of all?
Sure.
I just want the board to know that I was very surprised that on May 12th, there was a hearing before the Department of Health. Apparently, Mr. Anderson went before the Department of Health on May 12th, and he presented a presentation and a drawing which represented that my client's septic system. Well, the well was going to be moved on the lot. Well, he went before the board on May 12th, and what happened is he sent notice to California. He did not send notice to the applicants, the neighboring neighbors that have to receive notice. He did not send notice to New York like he did all the other times. He sent notice to California, who were unaware there was a hearing on that day. They had no idea. And even if you finish a moment, if you look at the current plans, and if you read where it shows the well, it shows on the plans that it was abandoned.
Okay, yeah, can, let me take this over, and let me just go through our comments. The design of this house has not changed in any way. Every time I look at numbers, they are different numbers. Now, they claim the house is, the footprint is one thousand seven hundred and fifty. In the first plans, it mentioned the house was two thousand square feet. Now, the volume, the exterior volume of the house has not changed. On the contrary, it has been increased because the second floor, in the first meeting, its second floor was setback on both sides when Wade was sitting on the, on top of the first floor. And now, all the sides are pushed all the way out to the sidewalls. So I don't know where these numbers come from, but the cubic feet, in my opinion, has increased because the house goes all the way. We are still looking from our side at an eighty-foot wall, twenty-two or twenty-three, or whatever how many feet high. I can't tell because it's not under...
And in addition, with respect to the pyramid wall on the new draw, and he's showing a rooftop, that there's going to be a rooftop. Yet, how are they going to get to that rooftop? That's going to be an additional structure.
They're chairs, no, they're stairs.
But still stairs, that's still going to be an additional structure. The structure, the same issues that we stated on the first meeting before this remain the issue today. It hasn't changed at all.
So let me just ask something, Bruce. So in, on the north side of the house, the walls extend all the way to the front of the garage, correct? And then in the...
Okay, and Bruce is going to comment after you, so.
Okay.
Be your presentation.
Okay.
And the other speakers will give Bruce an opportunity to...
So the total volume, the total volume of the building has increased because there's no setback on the second floor in any way, so the walls are moved all the way out. The, there are stairs to the roof deck in this new plant here, so I guess there's a plan for roof deck, but we have no idea what's going to be on the roof. Are there banisters on the roof? Are there, are there tech, are there structures? Is there water up there, electricity, lighting whatsoever? So this has to be looked at, and the numbers, all these numbers on these plans have to be verified because I cannot make sense between the first set of plans and the second set of plans, except that the total cubic, cubic feet volume was increased. Now, I would like to talk about the properties on Ocean View 12 and Ocean View 14. Now, Ocean View, Ocean View fourteen, Ocean View fourteen, yeah, Ocean View, Ocean View fourteen was a rebuilt...
It was a pre-existing non-conforming lot, first of all. It was a pre-existing non-conforming lot, so it wasn't a self-created hardship. Mr. Anderson keeps speaking about this hardship, but he, the owner bought the lot knowing the restrictions existed on the property. He knew it was a lot that was less than a quarter of an acre. So there's no hardship here. He knew what the parameters were in which he could build a house. He was well aware of it, which is very different than number fourteen, where it was a non-conforming, pre-existing use. In addition, the reason I'm mentioning this is because at the last meeting, Mr. Anderson said that he had a few houses he was going to look into and come back in detail and state how they were precedent-setting, major precedent-setting. Well, in the variances that we saw that were granted, the neighbors all agreed. No one objected to the variance, and they're not precedent-setting. They're very minor. And as Chris, my client, has brought to the attention of this board, the numbers are not accurate. And because there's been so much misinformation about this property, I really feel that the numbers need to be looked at very carefully because they're not accurate, and I don't want to make any accusations against anyone, but again, look that well. The neighbors live in New York. They were never informed about this hearing before the Department of Health. There was a letter written to the Department of Health in which they stated their objection.
And Celia, you know, we can't do anything about what happened with them.
No, I think, you know why I mentioned it. The reason I'm mentioning this is because it goes to the credibility of what the applicant is saying, what the owner is saying, his representative. That's why I'm mentioning it. I think it's very important and telling.
Okay, all this is important, so the precedence doesn't exist. I checked all the variances that were issued by the town. Four properties that were mentioned before, number twelve, number fourteen, fall in a category of minor variances. One of the houses was rebuilt. The original house was torn down, and then there was a new house built, and they were not even, they didn't even apply for any kind of variance. The building permit was given to build a new house on one and a half stories. Now, the other property has, that applied for variance, it's a minor variance. That minor variance was given a long time after the first house was built. Now, the one house is setback from the other house and not next to each other. They do not interfere with anybody's view in any way. And so the, I can see, I can see why somebody wants to make it a precedent. There isn't a precedent on all five properties on this road. So now, here comes the key part. It was mentioned that to build a one-story house would degrade the neighborhood. Now, that is, I would say, like a good joke on a bad day, but we have a beautiful one-story house, which we enjoy, which is great. We have neighbors who have one-story house, and because it was a one-story house, we bought this property years ago. And we talked to the previous owners of our neighbors, the Kennas, and they told us that they tried to build a second story, but the previous owner of this property would not agree to do a variance and build a second story, so they added on to the front of that, towards that. So the fact is, this is a small property. Our property is the same size as a neighbor's property. Our house is as small as a neighbor's house or as proposed house. So there really isn't much difference in the properties. And I think you can comfortably build a one-story house, and as in your original plans, you had planned to have a completely built-out basement with two-bedroom suites, with two bathrooms, with a gym, a fully built-out basement. It's not a basement. That's a story to me. It's nine feet high, nine feet tall. That's considered a story. So if you build a one-story house, one story above the ground, you still can have one story below it, whatever you want to do. You know, you have to, you, the architects and the developers have to be creative about it, and with the restrictions that this size lot provides you with.
And in summation, we're going to be brief. I know you've been here a long time. I just want to state for the record, the reason also that they're very concerned about this structure is it's going to impede the sun from hitting their vegetation. It's going to affect the vegetation, it's going to affect the privacy, and it is going to affect the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood. Because as board members have indicated, it's a very small lot, and a house of this structure and size and the way it's been designed, it can't accommodate a big house. And we'd like to really just rest with that.
So, I'll show you quickly something I didn't upload it. These are our houses side by side. So what the architect showed, that the new house, their proposal is smaller than ours. Just look at one. The red one is their new plan. The green one is our house, side by side. So that's one thing. Now, the effect. This is all up. Okay, so these are just for fun. I went out and I created a sixteen-foot-tall thing here to see and put in levels of whatever, twenty feet, sixteen feet, twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-eight feet. I don't know at all.
We can't see them very well, so feel free to submit these documents.
Submit them.
I'll submit them all.
Please, submit them in writing, yes.
Okay, so I'll make a submission of all these documents.
Very good, very good.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else?
You're objecting.
We see your comments. Is there anyone else on the public waiting to be heard in connection with the application of Forty Ocean View Drive LLC?
I see no other hands.
No other hands, okay. Bruce, I want to give you an opportunity to respond.
Okay, the first part is... Bruce, can I interrupt Bruce for a second? Sure. Okay, sorry, sorry about that. The answer to the gentleman is the cubic volume has been reduced, not increased, all right? If you look at our drawings, A102, sir, we have gone to half an inch to calculate this.
And Mayron, you have to address your comments to us, okay? Not, okay, address your comments to us.
Yes, so to the board, cubic volume has been reduced, number one. Number two, when the gentleman referred to the new design that goes all the way out to the sides, yes, that is. But the ceilings have reduced by two feet. Bottom line, he is not understanding the drawings, and he's reading them incorrectly. I just want to be a hundred percent sure on that, number one. Number two, going to the roof, yes, there is an access to the roof, but that is it. There's no other structure on the roof that's going to be added afterwards. It's access to the roof, all right? And the bedrooms in the basement, yes, it is possible, and it was previously submitted. But personally, I don't think anybody wants to sleep in the basement as a bedroom. That, okay, so that's just my opinion, and I leave it at that. I just wanted to make sure.
Very good. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, I want to...
Have something to say?
Yes, I do. So first of all...
Keep short. We're coming back again, Neil.
First of all, first of all, I didn't send out any notice to you, Decever agents, or any other neighbor in front of the Health Department, because that's what the Health Department does. There was no sleight of hand, and I resent that accusation. Second of all, I didn't even appear at the hearing. It was undertaken by the engineer. No sleight of hand here, and I resent, underline resent, that accusation. Now, the idea that these houses, that there is no precedent here, is ridiculous because I already provided you with the variances. They're already in your file jacket. The notion that I...
Each case has its own merits, Bruce.
Okay, but the idea that, excuse me, but the idea that a house, three-point, a two-story house, three-point-two feet from a property line doesn't, doesn't create a significant pyramid nonconformance is ridiculous. Of course it does. They're three-point-two feet off the side plot. I provided you with those surveys. I provided you with those variances. So in a, in a context of a forty-foot-wide lot in which we comply with coverage, the house isn't too big, that's for sure, because we're not asking for that relief. Okay, I want this, this should be very clear because so far, everything I've been put in so far has, seems to be ignored by everyone. The idea that there's this visual impact, you can't even see. I just gave you photographs, and they're in your file jacket, that these properties are bordered by a six-foot stockade fence that happens to be on the seater in its property, and all the vegetation that they're worried about isn't their vegetation. That's our vegetation, because it's on our property line. That's, and that is also shown on the survey. If you take a look at your survey, it'll show you where that vegetation is. It's been surveyed. It's not their vegetation. So you can't really see it, and it's not your vegetation. Now, it's not the Seaver agent's vegetation. I have correctly shown how these two properties line up, and we have been, tried to be sensitive by moving the second-story portion of the house back behind them. So I don't understand what view they're talking about because it doesn't impede a view, and in any event, that's not our zoning criteria to begin with.
Mr. Anderson, is this your first application before this board over pyramid relief?
Of course not. I've been doing this for thirty years.
You know what is acceptable to us, basically, and what we're looking for. Sixty-six eighty-eight is not what we're looking for. Go home and do your homework. We'll bring you back for another meeting.
Okay, all right. My next question, Bruce, is when he can come back. We do have room, but it sounds to me like you're going to have to be revising plans. So I would think that you're going to need a little bit more time than two weeks. So I don't know if the June 16th meeting works for you. Then the next meeting after that is July 7th.
I would refer to Mayron, how he's the designer. Perhaps he can weigh in, let us know if he's still there.
Yeah, I'm still here, Bruce. Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I had to, what are the dates again? I'm sorry.
The dates are June, because I think, you can't do June 2nd too quickly.
June 2nd is not, it's not possible.
June 2nd is not possible, but June 16th or July 7th.
June 16th.
June 16th, okay.
Well, I make a motion and we leave this open for all purposes to our...
How many?
June 16th, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
We'll leave it open to, for all purposes, to our June 16th meeting.
Second.
Mayron, you had a question?
No, my question was how many days before the meeting you need my documents, though.
Well, if you can get them to us a week before, that would be nice.
A week before, thank you. Sorry about, sorry about interrupting.
That's okay. Mr. Tyhel?
Hi.
Mr. Daley?
Hi.
Ms. Kern?
Hi.
Mr. Mastodonio?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Chair of aside, thank you all for your comments this evening. Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, board members. Bye.
All right, next stop, vision on the agenda is a holdover application. It's item ten on the agenda. Kai Sturman and Mary T. Ryan, seventy-seven Reeves Bay Trail in Flanders, Southern County Tax Map, nine hundred dash one twenty-two dash three dash twenty-eight.
Okay, Lori, this is yours as well?
All right, yes, it is.
Okay, back for more.
Back for more. We did a few things you requested. Um, we did submit the plans with the floor heights, ceiling heights.
Okay.
Uh, and then based on some comments at the last hearing, I did a little bit of research with my client, actually. And we were able to locate quite a few homes, uh, six in particular that are two story. Um, one has a pyramid variance and the other ones clearly, uh, I was able to get the surveys as well and it shows the width of the lots. Um, they're all undersized width and they all have houses very close, ten feet to the side yard, uh, twelve feet to the side yard. But they're all two story homes that clearly breached the pyramid, even though they were built before zoning.
Okay.
Um, those packages were probably forwarded to you by email, but are also dropped off by hand today.
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 So we didn't get them.
I know.
Didn't get it.
But I would like you to see them.
I, I, we, and we would like to see them.
Okay, good.
Okay, um. All right.
Also, in my correspondence, I also sent you some emails that were correspondence between the architect and my client, Mr. Sturman, about how they came upon the various design that they have and why. Um, for example, um, he is, he works with wood. He builds surfboards and the like, and that is part of the reason for having a tall ceiling in one of the garage spaces.
What does he say?
One of them also to accommodate boats on trailers.
What did you say he builds?
Surfboards.
Surfboards, okay.
Yeah, surfboards. And then he also, um, likes to put his boat on the trailer in the garage. So he needed the ceiling height for that as well.
What is the ceiling height?
Um.
The requested ceiling height is nine feet.
On both first and second?
Kai, did I previously swear you in?
I'm, I'm sorry, you did not.
Did not, okay. So I, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Kai Sturman, eighty-three Reeves Bay Trail, Flanders, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, so you, so, sorry, why I had to swear before you get a test.
Okay, so the ceiling height on the first floor is nine feet, six inches. And that he's requested because he makes surfboards and he needs room to, and, and also works with plywood, ru- room to maneuver the, those pieces of wood in the, one of the garages. The other one, he likes to put his boat away for the winter on its trailer. And that would be the reason for the height of those. And also it helps to explain why there's three garages and two parking spaces. One's a boat parking space, one's a workshop, there's an indoor garage space and two parking spaces. So that was why that variance is.
Yeah.
Upon us. Um.
I, I don't, I really don't know, Lori, excuse me, I don't know how we can kind of make any determination on something that we haven't seen that just got submitted today, but we probably should have put this over, you know?
No, no, these, no, this, the, the ceiling height came in on May nineteenth. Oh, no, so that, this is the, no, it came on May twelfth. They, they kept, they were in your packets, um, because I got them into town hall at ten, by ten AM, the day they were being mailed to you. So it's just the revised plans with the ceiling heights on it. Cover letter is dated May twelfth.
Okay. And you know, we're, we're having, you know, when, when we have things submitted on the day of the hearing, especially when it's, when it's a, you know, a Zoom meeting, but even when it's not a Zoom meeting, where it's handed documents on the night of the meeting, it makes it very difficult for us to be able to look at them before.
No, I'm aware of that. I mean, the problem was that, that when the question came up of whether there were two story houses in the neighborhood or not. Kai and I went about doing some work together. He went around, took pictures and I looked up surveys and we had to put this together. I emailed it to Candace a couple of days ago and then I brought it by hand today. But the ceiling height matter was submitted a week ago. That was not, the drawings with the ceiling height on it. So that you should have, because I got it to her in time for going out in the mail.
But, but that, but it's nine six and what's the second floor?
Uh, sorry. The second floor is. Well, it's, it's got different heights. It's ten, ten-two on the sides where the bedrooms are and thirteen-nine, uh, in the living room. So the way that the architect explained it, and when they talked about trying to reduce it, he said, um, where is it? Lori, the ceiling heights are all cathedrals. That is the max height of the cathedral in those rooms. We can create a flat spot at a lower height to bring the ceiling height down. And I said, what height do you think would work? And I said, you know, anything to lower the height would be better. And he came back and said, uh, the wall height of the second floor dormers are only seven foot nine inches. If we flatted the cathedrals off, it won't really help with the pyramid violation. So those were how he tried to, to look at it, to address it.
Can you put them up? Can you, can you share them on the screen? Because the setbacks are pretty significant, you know? It's, it's like a seventy-one inch setback. I mean, where is the pyramid encroachment?
On, on our property?
Yeah.
That's on the plans that were submitted with, to you. I can't share it on the screen, no.
I'm having trouble with what floor you submitted on the twelfth.
It sounds like for some reason you didn't get it, but I know.
I have a proposed first floor plan.
Yep.
And I have a proposed second floor plan.
Okay, so look, look in the middle of the garage and you'll see a, um, a bubbled area.
Ceiling height nine four, okay.
There you go. And it's the same, there's three bubbles on.
Okay.
Well, actually.
Yeah, I see the bubbles, but usually don't we get some sort of a outdoor structure with the piercing of the roof? So we get to see the pyramid.
That was part of our original submission. That, that was in the application.
So there's been no modification of the heights?
No, not yet, because the question was raised.
Just wanted to make sure there's been no modification of heights.
Yeah. No.
But Lori, I did get the May twelfth submission. I, I have it in my.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, we, we did, I, I, I got it, but hopefully the rest of the board got it too.
Yes, I got a copy as well. Cross section with a height and instead it's just a bubbled.
Yeah, it's not a cross section.
Right, right.
So first floor nine six and the second floor.
It's got three different bubbles.
Thirteen-nine, eight-six and eight-six, correct? Nine-six, nine-six? Or eight-six, eight-six?
On the outside. Mm-hmm. Yep, so, you know, Kai wrote, did you see the, um, the emails that I attached to the May twelfth submission?
I got those.
Okay, because that explains quite a bit of the rationale that went into the discussion between Kai and Brendan, the architect, about, you know, they, they wanted ten to twelve foot, but they ended up going with nine. That was the absolute acceptable lowest for the garage. Um, but they had reduced it from what they preferred at the beginning.
What's the total pyramid relief you're seeking?
What is the amount of pyramid relief?
Yeah, the total.
All right, I've got to go back to mine. Other notes here.
Five thousand eighty-three.
Eighty-three? Five thousand eighty-three.
Have you reduced that, Lori?
No, no, we were just talking about that. They had, they had talked about reducing it, but they need the eight foot garage doors, for example, to get the boat on the trailer in. And they need the ceiling height in the garages to work with the wood and make the surfboards.
What about the ceiling height on the second floors?
What, 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 what are we worried about? What are we worried about? So somebody can put their boat in the garage? I don't get that. I remember up in Flanders that we, we turned down garages and so people could put boats in garages.
I agree.
Yeah, that's not compelling to.
Not compelling at all. No.
Yeah, it's too much.
Too much.
But we do have letters of support from two of our neighbors, you recall. But we do live next door on one side of the house, so the pyramid's only encroaching on us. That, that is an unusual circumstance. And we did find examples of other houses in the neighborhood that have severe pyramid encroachments, whether they're pre-existing or were granted relief.
You know, Lori, you were probably on when we were talking to, uh, the folks in, in Chinacock Hills too. I mean, sometimes a lot is, 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 is limiting and it doesn't mean we can always have what we want on a, on a small lot, you know?
Why do we need this, the high, high ceilings on the second floor?
It's just a cathedral effect, but he said if we, if we undo the cathedral, it doesn't really take away from the pyramid.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if you think about it, cathedral points up in the middle. You flatten the cathedral, it doesn't solve your pyramid issues on the two sides.
Okay.
It was studied, they did look at it.
Okay, so currently we haven't changed the pyramid relief that's being proposed. But Lori, you had mentioned that there was, you know, we have the, the, the back and forth about it. I, my recollection is that we're, that we had asked to see the pyramid relief reduced. I'm pretty sure that's.
Too much.
That's what you're asking for?
I think so.
Kai, is there anything you want to add?
Uh, yes, am I unmuted yet? Yeah, you can hear me. Yeah, it just, this is a, I apologize. I mean, this seems like a haphazard presentation. We started a presentation two weeks ago and then it was determined that the documents somehow didn't make their way into the right hands. So now we're picking up on a conversation that never really started. Uh, the idea was to put this off to this meeting today because the documents weren't available two weeks ago. And now it appears some of the members don't have all the stuff we're looking for either. In any event, uh, I thank you for hearing me out. The garage will be a, a space for keeping cars and for doing some work as a, as a hobby, frankly. This is not my career. Uh, and a good height for a garage would be anywhere from ten to fourteen feet. That's a standard garage height. I'm, I've gone down to nine feet, which I feel is the, the bottom realistic number. And from the get-go, when I retained Mr. Maloney, the architect, uh, we're aware of the limitations, we're aware of the size of the lot. And we designed this and went through several different designs with the intent of doing the best we could with the sizes. It, it, we, we did not approach this as a, let me ask for twice what I'm looking for and then take forty percent off and see what we can come to terms with. I'm not here, I, I'm not looking to waste anybody's time, certainly not my own. And I think together we made a good faith effort. After speaking with all of our neighbors, by the way, who were involved in the development of these plans, we made a good effort to try to get this right the first time. If we haven't done that, I apologize. Um, but I just want you to understand that we did the best that we could with sincerely good intentions.
We appreciate that.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm getting that we have some concerns from members of the board. And it may be that we didn't even discuss pyramid in great detail at the last public hearing. You may be correct about that, but I'm certainly getting tonight, uh, that we have, uh, questions about how to reduce the pyramid, uh, talking about ceiling heights, talking about seeing, uh, um, what, what can be done. And, you know, when we hear like a design professional say, oh, well, it doesn't really affect, you, you know, the pyramid if we, you, if we make a change, that's, you know, I, a, a, a skilled, uh, uh, designer, architect, um, should be able to come up with ways to reduce pyramid relief.
Do you know that this is, the five thousand is split on the two sides? You do realize that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I do.
We do.
Excuse me.
Yeah, and I also have a note in this file that.
Wetlands? But we're good on the wetlands.
You're good on the wetlands.
We have an NJ from the environment division because of the pulpit.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, all right. So, but you know, that all having been said, like, you know, I mean, we historically, a- as a board, granted pyramid relief in the range of five thousand cubic feet. Um, not always, but, but, but we, we certainly have, have done it in the past. But we, we really have to be convinced that there's a, that there's a rationale and that there really isn't, aren't other options. Um, and I'm just hearing, you know, concerns from, uh, members of the board, uh, that the pyramid relief is too much. And so it sounds to me like even though we haven't been able to review what you submitted today, Lori, I think we're going to want you to come back anyway and, and consider what can be done to reduce pyramid relief. But I, and I'm not going to give you a number, but I'm just going to say that's what I'm getting from.
I understand. So we'll, we'll speak again with the architects and see what, if anything, can be done.
Okay.
So you want to hold it over till when?
Um, well, I don't know how much time you need. We have room on our agenda on our next meeting, June second. And if not that, we have room on our agenda on June sixteenth. And, and in July. So you, you tell me what works for you.
Uh, Brendan can probably get to it pretty quickly, so. Let's do June second. If I need more time, I'll ask her for, for more time.
Okay, okay. All right, but before we do that, any other questions and rumors to the board?
Yeah, I think, um, but I think that, you know, we don't want to be in this constant cycle of having things submitted when we're not able to get them. And, uh, you know, so June second, i- if you don't, if you don't have something in by next week, Lori.
Right, right, right.
We're not going to go in time over to be in the same cycle of.
Right.
You know, so.
Then go, let's go to June, let's go to June sixteenth. We're, we're just trying to push it too much to, uh.
I, yeah. That doesn't always serve, serve the, the interest of, of the application when we push it too quickly.
Yeah.
All right, so June sixteenth.
We, we, you want to do June sixteenth instead?
Yes.
Okay, June sixteen, okay. All right, any other questions to members of the board? For Katie or Anthony? Um, is there anyone from the public who's waiting to be heard? See if they can catch you with the application of Sturman and, uh, Ryan. This is for property located at seventy-seven Reeves Bay Trail in Flanders. If you're waiting to be heard on Zoom, this is the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No hands.
Okay, if not, I will move that we, uh, keep the application of Sturman and Ryan open for all purposes until our June sixteenth meeting.
Second.
Second.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Mr. Macedonio.
Hi.
Um, Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Daley.
Hi.
Chair of aside, thank you both for your comments this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now on to the decision calendar.
Well, I have a few.
Congratulations.
I do.
All right. First decision I have is in the minor, uh, is a minor decision in the matter of the application of Stephen Allison Bartolot, Bartolotta. This is for property located at Southern County Tax Map Member nine hundred two seventy-two forty-six. This application is for property located at sixteen Palo Alto Drive Hampton Bays. The applicant requests a minor variance in connection with a proposed one-story dwelling. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from Town Code three thirty-eleven Residential Districts Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal front yard setback of thirty-five point three feet, where forty feet is required for a proposed one-story dwelling, as shown in the survey prepared by Jason Lettingham of Scalise Land Survey, last dated March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and the floor plans and elevations prepared by Norman Seelock PE, dated March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Granted the foregoing relief, the subject to such other conditions and premises as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Todd Hill.
Hi.
Mr. Daley.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Mr. Macedonio.
Hi.
Chair of aside, next I have a determination in the matter of the application of MM Maria Mendelson Realty LLC. This is for property located at Southern County Tax Map Member nine hundred eleven, one eighteen point nine. This application is for property located at two five three eight Noack Road, Noack. Applicant requests a rear yard setback for a proposed two-story dwelling. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from Town Code three thirty-eleven Residential Districts Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal rear yard setback of sixty-five feet, where a hundred feet is required for a proposed two-story dwelling, as shown on the survey prepared by Stephen Borilski Surveyor, last revised April fourth, twenty twenty-two, and the floor plans and elevations prepared by William Minier, Architect, PC, dated April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. This decision is subject to such other conditions and premises applicant has already acquired This decision is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Ms. Todd Hill.
Hi.
Ms. Daly.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Ms. Macedonio.
Hi.
Jervis, hi. Next, I have a determination in the matter of the application of Freida Realty Holdings LLC. This is for property located at Tax Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred one sixty-three twenty-five point eight. This application is for property located at twelve Cobial Road, Watermill. Applicant requests a rear yard lock coverage of thirty-five percent where a maximum of twenty percent is required is permitted. For a fifty-five by one hundred and ten foot sunken tennis court on a lot that is burdened by a fifty-foot right-of-way and shallow depth to groundwater, pushing the house further back from the road. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants applicant relief from Town Code three thirty seventy seventeen Placement of Accessory Building Structures and Uses in Residence Districts. For a proposed rear yard lock coverage of thirty-five percent where a maximum of twenty percent is permitted. For a proposed fifty-five by one-ten sunken tennis court, as shown in the survey prepared by Swires Holden, Weisenbach, and Smith, last revised April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. The grant of the foregoing belief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises. We have a second.
Okay.
Mr. Macedonio.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
No.
Ms. Todd Hill.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Ms. Daly.
Hi.
Jervis, hi. Next, I have a determina- determination in connection with the application of Third Garden Park Limited Partnership. This is for property located at Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred two eighty-nine two nine and nine hundred two fifty-one one three. This application is for property located at fifty-eight Old Country Road, East Quaw. Applicant appeals a determination from the Chief Building Inspector as to whether or not the relocation of twenty-one mobile homes. And the addition of square footage to existing homes is an expansion of a nonconforming use. Based on the evidence and testimony in the record and at the public hearing, this board finds that the relocation of twenty-one mobile home units. From Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred two eighty-nine two nine to Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred two fifty-one one three. And the addition of square footage to existing units, whether single plus or double wide in size. Is not considered an expansion of a nonconforming use pursuant to Town Code three thirty-one sixty-seven. As set forth in the prior Z in prior ZBA decisions, this board has consistently treated a nonconforming use. Of the mobile homes on the premises in terms of mobile home units slash plots slash pads and not pursuant to the square footage of each. Specifically, when the use on the premises existed in nineteen fifty-eight, it was a total of sixty-eight units. This use was confirmed by ZBA Decision Number sixteen eighty, dated January twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-six. And in nineteen seventy-two, this board, by Decision Number three one nine six, allowed the extension of the mobile home par. To add an addition to an additional thirty-four more trailer plots or fifty percent more units for a total of a hundred and two. Thereafter, many of the mobile home units were renovated, expanded, and or replaced by different units. And consistent with this interpretation that the expansion of this nonconforming use pertained to the number of units and not the square footage. The building department issued permits and certificates for additions to the existing residence, as well as replacements of mobile homes as a matter of course. As such, it's clear that the town has treated the nonconforming use on the premises in terms of the number of units. And this board finds that so long as the number of units does not exceed a hundred and two on the premises. Any change in the configuration layout or size of the individual units, whether single plus or double wide in size. Does not require review from the zoning board appeals for the expansion of a nonconforming use.
Second.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Ms. Todd Hill.
Hi.
Ms. Daly.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Macedonio.
Hi.
Jervis, hi. Next, I have a determination in the matter of the application of one five three Herricks LLC. This is for property located at Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred one twenty-three three thirty-six. This application is for property located at twenty-four Moon Avenue, Flanders. Applicant requests a variance for a pyramid encroachment in connection with a proposed two-story dwelling on a six thousand square foot lot in in R ten zoning district. Applicant initially requested three thousand five hundred twenty cubic feet of pyramid relief. But modified the plans to reduce the proposed encroachment to one thousand six hundred and eighty cubic feet. Likewise, the modification of the plans eliminated the request for a variance for total lot coverage. As modified, this application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from Town Code three thirty eighty-four D pyramid height. For a proposed encroachment in the amount of one thousand six hundred and eighty cubic feet, eight hundred and forty cubic feet at inside. For a proposed two-story dwelling, as shown in the survey prepared by Nathan Taff Corwin III, last revised May ninth, twenty twenty-two. And the pyramid design and floor plans prepared by Raymond Donner, Donner, Architect, last dated April eighth, twenty twenty-two. The grant of the foregoing relief, the subject is such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Ms. Todd Hill.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Ms. Daly.
Hi.
Mr. Macedonio.
Hi.
Jervis, hi. Last one I have. I have a decision on the matter of the application of Carlton Gibson. And Kai Pymark. This is for property located at Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred ninety-two three thirteen. This application is for property located at ninety-six Island Creek Road, North State. Applicant requests variances in connection with the shed that has been on the premises since at least the nineteen seventies. The premises is burdened by wetlands and is twenty-six thousand eight square feet in an R eighty zoning district. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief on the following provisions of the Town Code for an existing shed. One, Town Code three thirty eighty-four D pyramid height. For a pyramid encroachment in the amount of forty-one point six six cubic feet on the west side of the property. Two, three thirty seventy-six D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts. And Town Code three thirty eighty-three C yards to allow the shed to be located within the required front and minimum side yard for the principal building. And three, Town Code three thirty one fifteen D five continuums for an accessory side yard setback of five point two feet where ten feet is required. These variances are granted for the shed, as shown on the survey prepared by Thomas D Burke of Swires Holden, Weisenbach, and Smith, last revised August twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. And the plans of pyramid sketch prepared by Debbie Croft, Croft, Architect, P L L C, last revised October twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. And of such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises. Ms. Todd Hill.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Ms. Daly.
Hi.
Mr. Macedonio.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Jervis, hi. Anybody else have decisions?
I have one. You always put me last, so then everybody's angry by the time I read mine.
It was angry before Adam started.
Yeah, I know. Next time I'm going first. I have a decision in the matter of the application of Chandler Capital LLC. Property located at fifty-two Harvest Lane, Bridgehampton, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash one oh five dash one dash seventeen point fourteen. Applicant requests relief from Town Code for a proposed sunken fifty-five by one-ten tennis court with viewing deck, and I'll read the requested relief at the end. The property abuts an agricultural reserve on the west rear property line with mature screening present. The lot configuration results in an irregular backyard leading to constraints. And would require the removal of existing structures in order to accommodate placement of the tennis court entirely in the rear yard. The board finds that this application is entitled to the requested variance relief. And that it meets the five-part test set forth in Town Code and New York State Town Law. Therefore, the board grants applicant relief from the following provisions of the Town Code. For a proposed sunken and screened fifty-five by one-ten tennis court with viewing deck. One, Section three thirty dash eleven Residential District's Table of Dimensional Regulations. For an accessory side yard setback of twenty-three point, I'm sorry, twenty-three point nine feet, where thirty feet is required. And an accessory rear yard setback of twenty-six point four feet, where thirty feet is required. And two, Section three thirty dash seventy-six D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts. And Section three thirty dash eighty-three C yards. To allow the proposed sunken and screened tennis court to be located within the required minimum side yard for a principal building. As shown on the survey prepared by Stephen Boriskey LLC, last dated four fifteen, two thousand twenty-two. This decision is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired. Or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval approval of the subject premises. Including the legalization of all accessory structures and fencing built without benefit of a building permit and any other relief necessary.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Ms. Daly.
Hi.
Ms. Macedonio.
Hi.
Ms. Todd Hill.
Hi.
Jervis, I think the dog goes high too.
And the dog does too.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Wants the meeting to be over.
Not the only.
Get his wish.
Any other decisions? I want to say something while we're here. I just backed this one fifty-thick fifty-three Herricks LLC. I think this is an example of how this works, you know, we we often. Have people coming in asking for the the moon and the stars. And, you know, if we we push back and we see things as being excessive. They come more into compliance and it's it that works. And I just want to appreciate and express my appreciation for the rest of the board for the way that that was handled. So thank you.
I also want to say that you often, all of you often say that some some pieces of property can't have everything on them. And so some of the reasons why I vote no is for that reason.
I agree. I agree.
I agree. When they buy the property, they they kind of should know what the restrictions are on it.
Yeah, but I but sometimes we do that and sometimes we don't, so.
Well, they should. I always say, get a bigger piece of property if you want all that.
Right, or a smaller wish list.
Exactly.
And and the other thing I want to mention is, you know, we have this issue that's going on forever, which is people handing us, you know, on the night of the meeting, this materials that we haven't even been able to see. And then, you know, we're kind of, you know, left not knowing everything that they're talking about when they're making the presentation. And I don't know, maybe we can do something. We could do something about that. We can make a rule, a pretty strict one about.
And stick with and stick with it, though, Adam. We have to. I mean, Katie says that there are procedures that you agreed to in the past that.
Yeah.
Have seemed to fallen by the wayside. I mean, I think we have to really stick with it. Nothing gets to us if we don't have it in front of us.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not critical, that's one thing, but if it's critical, we can say, you know, come back, come back.
If it's not in in time for it to be in our package.
Right.
Um, then it gets adjourned and we shouldn't even entertain it. It just, we adjourn it. We don't ask them, oh, is it okay if we? It's adjourned. Boom.
And we all have to have it.
Yeah.
And it'll it'll stop happening if we do that.
Well.
They don't even.
Well, maybe not.
But we'll all stop adjourning it, but we will we will stop doing that position.
I think.
But also is that they don't need to come so it can get adjourned if we didn't get the information in time. Notified in advance.
Right.
To be adjourned, and then they don't come to talk, 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 and then we adjourn it. It just, it seems to be a waste of time for us and for them to have to.
Yeah, but but I have to say also, you know, if there are neighbors that are that want to say something to us, we want to give them a chance to do that. So it gets, there's a little bit of a balancing act there. But overall.
That's true.
The message, they can't expect us to understand what they're talking about if they don't give us the information with enough.
No, and and that's a good point, Adam, is many times neighbors, you know, plan to come to a meeting, want to be heard. And when it gets adjourned, you know, for one reason or another, they get kind of ticked off and even a little burnt out, like, oh, my God, I planned the meeting. I came and.
We've had people drive all the way from city and elsewhere, finding out as they sat down that it was adjourned.
And it's intuitive.
Maybe they can be notified in advance.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
The other thing is if we do go with the hybrid, it may lessen the effect of that somewhat, you know, the neighbors, but. Katie, keep us up to date on what's going on with the town board.
I will.
Yeah. Okay.
Good talk, Tom. Good talk.
Okay, we have a motion to close.
Motion.
Motion.
On second.
Second.
All in favor.